Let's call this meeting to order, and I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warman Regular Council Meeting for April 8th, 2019. And announcements. I know we talked about this last time, but Karen G., you weren't here, and I did want to congratulate you for being the Youth Volunteer of the Year. So congratulations, Karen G. Can everyone join me in a round of applause? Speech.
That's this Thursday, right?
That's this Thursday, yeah. Okay, uh, please for agenda, please. Council Peterson?
Motion to approve the agenda for the April 8th, 2019 Regular Meeting of Council.
Can we do a secondary for that? Uh, Council Philczuk, is there any questions, comments? Are you not all in favor? Okay. Okay, we have minutes in front of us for Committee of the Whole and Regular Meeting of Council, March 25th, 2019. Do I have a mover there? Council Julie?
I motion that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting held on March 18th, 2019, and the Regular Meeting of Council held on March 25th, 2019 be recorded, be taken as read and adopted.
Okay, do we have a secondary for that? Council Beck, is there any questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, moving on to Administration Report, City Manager.
Thank you, Worship. I only have one thing in my report, and that's the turbidity report, so if there's any questions...
Any questions, Philczuk? Are you not? Thank you. I see we have a new Finance Manager. Hello, Lisa.
Hello. Okay, we have one recommendation tonight, that's to give the amended bylaw 2019-04, a bylaw to regulate water and utility rates, the second and third readings. So SASS Water has advised the City of Warman that we will be subject to a 9.75% water rate increase effective May 1st, 2019. Considering that 2019 SASS Water increase, the City of Warman could respond with, one, no City of Warman utility rate increase, and this would mean that the, we would see the 9.75% increase in our operating expenses, but not the subsequent revenue, and this would result in a utility operational deficit of just under $465,000. Or option number two, increase the City of Warman utility rate by 9.75% and pass the SASS Water increase on to the user. Considering the increased amortization costs due to the significant 2018 capital additions, this would leave the department with a very small expected net profit of $14,000. Administration's recommendation would be to proceed with option two. While this option does not sufficiently support transfers to reserves for current infrastructure replacement, it does prevent the city from moving back into the realm of utility department deficits. The recommendation would also include continuing discussions with SASS Water and the City of Saskatoon regarding water rates and ensuring council is apprised of potential City of Warman utility rate options and the subsequent department position. Administration's recommended water rate increase of 9.75% will result in our current water rate of 23.54 per 1,000 gallons, increasing to 25.84 per 1,000 gallons. The revised water rate will result in our minimum water charge increasing from 41.20 to 45.22. Administration recommends a bylaw 2019-04, a bylaw to regulate water and utility rates, increasing the water rate from 23.54 per 1,000 gallons to 25.84 per 1,000 gallons, and the minimum charge of 41.20 to 45.22 be given the second and third readings at this regular meeting of council.
Okay, do we have a motion for second reading?
Yes, I would like to make that motion to, uh, you know, to adopt bylaw 2019-04, you know, to accept and regulate the water and utility rates.
Do we have a secondary for that? Council Philczuk, is there questions there?
I do have a question. Just after, after this was read the first time, did we get any comments or feedback from, you know, from the public? Like, was there anything received?
Uh, not, nothing that we're aware of that has come forward, and we did send it out in the last water bill that there was a proposed increase and that contact the utility department and gave the contact information, including email address, and I don't believe we received one comment back. Which was surprising, actually.
I think you've done a pretty good job of putting it out in the media, so it's not new news now. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Motion to have third reading? Council Beck? A secondary? Council Jones? Any further questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. That's everything. Planning.
Mayor Spence, members of council, a couple of items for discussion tonight. First is the subdivision of 1210 Industrial Drive. Planning and Development Department has received a request to subdivide the property located at 1210 Industrial Drive by splitting the property into two. Access to the rear lot will be off Steve Street, as attached, as Appendix A is a map showing the location of the proposed subdivision. The subdivision meets all requirements in the City of Warman zoning bylaw. A plan of the proposed subdivision is attached as Appendix B. No rezoning or bylaw amendments are necessary for the approval of this subdivision.
Okay, so we have a recommendation in front of us. Council Shram, you wish to make that?
Uh, yeah, I would like to motion to approve the subdivision of part of Lot 6, Block 2, Plan 1022, 54307, Northeast Quarter Section 25, TWP 38RGE, Southwest 3th Meridian, and 1210 Industrial Avenue, subject to separate service connection being installed.
Secondary for that? Council Peterson, is there any questions there? Okay, all in favor? Next item?
The second item for discussion tonight is bylaw 2019-05. This is a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw. Planning and Development has received a request to amend the zoning bylaw to allow chiropractor to operate at the property located at 903 Sixth Avenue South. The property is currently zoned M1 light industrial. In the City of Warman zoning bylaw, chiropractor services falls under the definition of medical offices and clinics. Planning and Development is requesting that this use is added to the list of discretionary uses for M1 light industrial zone properties. Including it in the list of discretionary uses will allow some discretion over approval of these types of uses in the M1 district. This amendment will advertise for two consecutive weeks. At the same time, we will also advertise the discretionary use approval for 903 Sixth Avenue South. Any concerns or questions will be brought back to a future council meeting as information before final reading of this bylaw. We also have one Committee of the Whole Meeting in between. If there's further discussion required, we can definitely bring it to that meeting as well. Council review plans to amend the zoning bylaw for 1211 Blue Shore Avenue. After some debate is determined that the preference would be to bring these kind of uses forward as discretionary uses rather than a blanket rezoning amendment. A copy of bylaw 2019-05 is attached as Appendix C.
Okay, so I have a recommendation in front of us. Motion, please, for first reading. Council Philczuk?
I'd like to make the motion that council proceeds with first reading and bylaw 2019-05, a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw with the intent to hold a public hearing, followed by a second and third reading at the Regular Council Meeting on April 22nd, 2019.
Okay, secondary for that? Council Shram? Is there any questions? Council Peterson?
Where is 903 in relation to some other businesses?
Um, so it's right next to the Warman Woodworkers. There's also the car dealership that's right in the front, down along Sixth Avenue, right across from Kindham Hamilton Street there.
Council Philczuk?
Just a clarification, so if we approve this, does this mean that if the chiropractor moved out, could other medical office clinics, like anything that fits under that criteria, they would be fine to go in without?
Correct with that definition, as long as they fell under that definition, the use would be approved for that building.
Okay. Just that building, though not all M1. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion to file Administration Reports? Council Beck?
Yes, I would like to motion to file the Administration Reports for April 8th, 2019, and have those accepted as presented.
A secondary for that motion? Council, Council Shram, is there further questions? All in favor? Okay, moving down to Council and Committee Reports, we'll start with the Mayor's Report. Do we have a motion? We have a few motions in there, so I guess we'll start with a motion for the Warman Childcare Center.
I motion that council approve the letter of support for the Warman Childcare Grant Application to Cal Tire for resurfacing of their playground area.
Is there a secondary for that? Council Beck, is there further questions? Yes.
Uh, your worship, um, I guess I would like to just make it plain that this is just strictly a letter, and that it, that the advertisement for this would still be in consultation with Administration in regards to this, just...
It is just a letter?
It's just, because they did put in there, along with the advertisements, I've just, I wanted my motion to be strictly for the, for the letter of support.
Okay, noted. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Um, we have a motion for Gilbert Q. Step. Who would like to make that one? Council Philczuk?
I'd like to make the motion that Gilbert Q. Step is awarded an honorarium of $150 for opening and closing a truth and reconciliation meeting being held on April 11th, 2019 in Warman, Saskatchewan.
Actually, that date is incorrect, because it is, it is tomorrow, is not?
Oh, Warman, April 11th, sorry.
April 9.
9.
Okay, so you've changed that. A secondary for that? Council Shram, is there any questions there? All in favor? And we also need a motion for Prairie Sky Chamber of Commerce Networking Breakfast.
I would like to make that motion. Yep, so this is going to be a motion for Council Tully, Council Peterson, and Council Philczuk to attend Prairie Sky Chamber of Commerce at the Warman Network Breakfast on Thursday, April 11th, 2019, and I believe that that's also featuring the City of Warman.
It is. Okay, secondary for that? Council, Council Philczuk, questions? Council Peterson?
I cannot attend that.
Okay. All right.
They normally are on Wednesday.
This is, this is different.
This is that, basically.
This is the, the networking breakfast.
I could actually attend. Yeah, yeah, and this year I will have to be leaving by nine o'clock, because I have the waste production meeting, but I could certainly stand there.
Okay, so we can switch those names out? Any other comments there? Okay, all in favor? Okay, is there any questions in my report? It's all pretty self-explanatory, and same with the upcoming events, and also the newsletter submissions. Okay, Student Council Report. Karen G., what is yours?
Good evening, Mayor Spence and council members. In my report, I just have a few things on what we did over the past few weeks. Um, what can I say here? It's pretty, we got number, I asked, what's his name, Principal Robton about numbers for the payment of the student parking lot, as there were complaints, Bob said there is when entering the parking lot, and he gave me numbers of $300,000, which were a lot of money, and we decided to keep going with travel and grading every few seasons, so that's that. We had the annual Massachusetts Hockey Tournament, which was a great turnout for everybody. It was music booming, like the Rush Games is what I was hearing, and we tried to look for a teacher versus students game, but there was not enough time and not enough, not a proper date to reschedule, so that was not proper. Um, we had some major presentations at the high school for grade nines and tens. I went through, it was pretty good. I would say it said that it affects a lot of people, and like most people listen to it, and there's usually one or two that think they're super cool and don't listen to the presentation, but that's everywhere. And there are, I went to the middle school today, and they're also collecting food for the Easter Food Drive in Warman, and I'd say we've collected a lot of food, and this Sunday is the sorting day, and other than that, I don't think there's anything else to report. Any questions, comments, or anything else?
So when you sort, do you sort them into boxes or?
So far, I think we sell them in boxes, and then we give them off to the church, where they'll have a few people send them off to civic people that they requested.
I see.
That are in need of help, and so it's more like a privacy concern, that's why not everybody, only the few people can go there.
That makes sense. Okay, if we could have a motion for the Mayor's Report and the Student Council Representative's Report. Council Tully and Secondary, Council Jones. Is there any further questions there, of either report? Hearing that, all in favor? Would you want to read, read it out, please?
Sure, I'm going to make a motion that the Mayor's Report and the Student Council Representative Report be accepted as presented for the April 8th, 2019.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor again? Since I missed that one up. Council Roundtable, starting with Council Philczuk.
Well, a couple announcements. First of all, do have a Regional Reconciliation Meeting tomorrow in Warman, and that's a bit of a follow-up to our, it's our regular one, and it'll be a follow-up to our strategic planning that we did. What I liked about it, we left our strat planning with actions, and so tomorrow we'll start those actions. We'll look at our MOU, Memorandum Understanding, hopefully something that now will come back to the organization. So right now, we're talking, is this something you could take back to your organization? And it's quite a large group, we're going to have about, as you saw from the picture there, 30 people, so tomorrow we'll be looking at the wording, we'll also look at finalizing the name, we've had a vote on that, I think I know what it is, but I'll wait until tomorrow and there's a motion passed with that for the Regional Reconciliation Committee. The other one I want to mention was the fire meeting, had a chance to go there, always great energy, it was a chance to, I went early, got to play around with the trucks a bit, do some networking and, and talking with, with all the people there. I didn't know I had to give a actual, I gave a report, but I didn't know I had to give a written copy of it too, for minutes, but I, I got that done too. No major concerns, they asked about, one thing they asked about was the speed limit on 6, if that was going to change, just when we did a round table, they'd heard that that may be changing with the 50, and I said I would bring that up. Besides that, it was just good camaraderie, they are looking at a few initiatives that I know the chief has talked about in his report, and I won't give details there because they haven't finalized those. Myself, I'd also have the Business Breakfast and also the Volunteer Awards Night coming up here this week. Been busy with coaching Babington Daily and Track, and then off to France here next, the 17th to the 27th with the travel group, so it'll be busy, busy time. Also, one more announcement, that actually our principal has accepted a job at Division Office, so we'll have a new principal next year too, so we'll wait and find out how that is, and that's probably news for most people here, that that just happened last week, so I guess that I'll leave it at that.
What position did he take at the?
A corps mater.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so it's a, it'd be a bit of a lateral move, it'd be considered that way, because he was already at the largest high school, so it'd be a lateral move, but, but different, different sort of responsibilities. So don't know what'll happen, it'll be by appointment that they'll look at the principalship now.
Okay, thank you. Council Shram?
I have nothing, I've been on vacation, just got back, so...
Council Peterson?
Hey, well, I attended the Joint Library Meeting, that was on the 27th. First chance to meet the new principal of the elementary school. Seemed to be a quick meeting, wasn't a whole lot happening with that one. Also had a chance to go to the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast on Saturday with Mayor Spence, and it was the, I thought a great presentation put on there by the, by the speaker, the name escapes me off the top of my head, but telling his life story and all the trials and tribulations he went through to end up coming out with, having had a great career and made, you know, very successful for himself, and passing on that success to, to his band and, and passing on that knowledge of how he, you know, got, you know, fought through life to, you know, to come out to be, you know, the individual that he, that he is now. So it was, I definitely worthwhile having gone to that. That's it.
Council Tully?
A couple things, I guess, to give updates on. First one, over the weekend, Warman, or sorry, Martinsville actually had their Business Expo, and I attended on Saturday for a little bit, and had a bit of a discussion with the Chamber Executive Director and a number of the directors that were there with their own, with their own booths, so there was a couple of them that I spoke with, and it seemed like it was very well done. And yeah, the trade show had, I think they would, they said they were a little bit disappointed with some of the turnout on the Saturday or the Friday night, but a number of vendors, they also had it set up, that they have a number of household or home-based businesses that were set up on the second floor area. On, trying to remember what date that was, give me a second. March 26th in Regina, I attended the SAMA Urban Advisory Committee, and don't really have a whole lot to bring back from that, but traveled to Regina for the day for that. And on Wednesday, Mayor Spence and I are going to be traveling to Regina for the SAMA AGM, and we're going to be there for that day. And then on Thursday, I'm going to be attending the Business Breakfast, and I should be at the Volunteer Center.
Thank you. Council Jones?
On Saturday, March 30th, we had our Strategic Planning Session for the Legends Golf Course. It was actually, it was about four hours long, and you know what, there was a lot done. It was really interesting to see, you know, the first time I've been through it, there's a lot of very energetic and very engaged people on that board and the staff that they had attend, and I was very impressed with how much work and how many decisions and how much direction got done in a matter of four hours. So, you know, really high level, a lot of it was around idea generation, around how to get basically another couple hundred thousand bucks in revenue for that golf course, and what a difference that would make, so it was really good. So now just in the stages of finalizing that over the weeks, back and forth through emails, but yeah, good to hear.
Okay, good, thank you. Council Beck?
Yes. On March 29th, myself, CAO Bob Smith, and also Aaron Legg, we had the opportunity to tour the, with the three walking clinics here in our community. I do have to say, we were well-prepared, so thank you very much for, you know, for all the, you know, you know, for the arrangements, you know, that was certainly well-done. And we were, we were definitely well-received by, you know, certainly by the clinics, they were, you know, very, very happy to, you know, to host us there and whatnot, so yeah, so that was, you know, very positive visits, and also some, you know, some really good feedback from that, so, yeah, you know, so I just wanted, you know, this year, I just wanted to say that that was very well-done. Upcoming, I do have the Saskatchewan Waste and Reduction Meeting from April 10th to the 12th, so I have that here in Saskatoon, so I will be able to attend the Prairie Sky Chamber Meeting there on, on the 11th in the morning. I will have to leave, you know, just to make sure that I have enough time to get to the, to the Waste Reduction Meeting. And also, we have the Hockey Draft on April 12th, so, you know, that there definitely raises funds, you know, let's say by, by the, by the Warman Sport and Cultural Village Committee, and certainly like the funds raised there go towards the, the second arena, so yeah.
It's on Thursday?
Friday. It's actually Friday, this, this time, yeah. So, so the playoff season will just be underway, and yeah, so, so yes, we're, we're sold out with this event, and yeah, you know, just like previous years, should be very positive and, you know, sort of like a big turnout, so, but yeah, I think I'll be working the podium, you know, making sure that everybody follows like the timeline rules and whatnot, so, so yeah, it's, you know, certainly like a great night, you know, that's certainly be there, so. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Moving down to correspondence, we have in front of us the RCMP Media Release, RCMP Town Hall Media Release, RCMP Information Request from Mississippi Police Service, and the 2019 Wobexa Finalists. So, I think we're just going to be filing them for correspondence. Do we want to start, who's going to do that? Council Peterson?
I make motion to file the correspondence that was presented at this April 8th, 2019 Regular Meeting of Council.
Okay, who wants to second that? Council Tully? Is there any questions there?
I did actually have one. It was the, our, what are we doing with as far as staffing? It says, please provide email response by April 12th, 2019. Are there any recommendations for that area that, it is a short turnaround, obviously, but it's, it's also future planning, it's for next year.
So regarding the RCMP staffing, how many members? I certainly haven't heard anything from council or from Staff Sergeant that more members are required, so we haven't made any recommendation to do, so...
Do you know our numbers from Warman and Martinsville?
Still, I think one difference.
Okay.
One difference.
And I think that the whole idea is try to, for Warner Martins to align our numbers, and that's, we're still ahead, so I think until they start moving ahead, we would probably hold off and adding a new one.
Do we know Martinsville's adding a new one?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, okay.
Any other questions?
Yes. Yes, regarding the RCMP Town Hall Meeting, obviously, the, you know, the RCMP have, have certainly made the announcement, are we doing anything to, you know, to promote this to our citizens, like do we take on any responsibility or, you know, for that, or, or do we leave that just to them to, you know, to promote?
Well, I think we leave it up to them, but we do have some communications, Aaron can work on putting some posts up if that's something that we want to do. I think other than that, it definitely is up to the RCMP, it is their evening, however, we would like our residents to attend, so I, I think it would be probably a good idea for us to put some advertising out there, and we can discuss that later with Aaron, what that might look like.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, moving down to other reports, we have in front of us Regional Reconciliation Committee Meeting Minutes. Council Philczuk?
I'd like to make the motion to accept the Regional Reconciliation Minutes for February 2019 as presented.
Okay, so, secondary, Council Shram? Is there any questions around that? Okay, all in favor? Any council approval?
I'd like to make the motion for that. Motion that council approves the city accounts presented by checks numbered 19,582 to 19,700 in the amount of $408,098.92, and the payroll voucher is numbered 8655 to 8718 in the amount of $86,595.79, be approved.
Okay, a secondary for that? Council Peterson, is there any questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, a motion for adjournment? Council Jones and a secondary, Council Tully, all in favor? And I know we don't even have it on our agenda, but maybe if Aaron could come forward, we can talk about, maybe some advertising, some Facebook posts. Hi, Aaron, how are you? Good for you. Good. Okay, so I guess maybe we should just talk a little bit about the RCMP Town Hall Meeting, because I'm, I'm hearing that everybody would like to see some advertising on Facebook around that, and that they do have their own advertising, that they do, but we can piggyback on that.
You know, certainly this year, I would like to make a comment on this, and, I mean, like, obviously, the RCMP was looking at, at basically having two Town Hall, you know, meetings throughout the year, and that there's, you know, basically now reduced to the one. So, you know, holding it here in Warman, you know, I'm like, I think that the RCMP will continue to have those if there's, you know, you know, certainly turnout from the other places. So, I mean, like, I wouldn't want to see those moved from here, first of all, and also, second to that, yeah, I mean, you know, with this year, like, you know, I'm like, I just don't see the exposure of that, you know, let's say, out through, through other media sources, and I just don't know how much of a draw that would have if we didn't provide some, you know, some power to their, you know, to their messaging.
Council Philczuk?
I'm unfortunately unable to attend, I'm out of town, I leave that day, and it's one that I, I do enjoy, and it is, it is, it is a good, it is a good meeting, that I find the RCMP are very frank, that you have a question, you have a concern, you have something, you bring it up, and you'll get an answer, and it'll be fairly open, and, and so I, I was... you bring it up, and you'll get an answer, and it'll be fairly open, and so I was quite impressed, and I think the ones that were there last time commented about that, that when you ask a question, you're getting a fairly straight answer, and they weren't afraid of really any types of questions, so I appreciated that, so it was a good meeting to attend. I also agree with Council Beck, if the numbers are there warranted, but sometimes low numbers sometimes have a meaning too, that they're happy with how things are going, but it's important for people to know, because I think the people that went will probably show up again, just because I thought that conversations were very good, and it wasn't long, it was a half an hour, it was done, but it's...
Okay, well, does everyone agree that, we'll get Aaron and put in some Facebook posts, because that's, when is that meeting next week?
Seventeen, seventeen.
And just really their app that they have here is...
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, I think it's just reposting what they have, but like I don't think we have to go back to know, you know, to paper roll, to, you know, to draft up anything else.
It's a chance to ask RCMP any questions you want.
Okay, good, and then I think after our awards evening, we'll probably do some posts around that as well. Is there any other, anything else that council would like to see in the way of posts or communication from council out?
Maybe with the breakfast too, like, because there'll be some of the speeches there that maybe some summary of, because that's sort of that whole, I almost think it's our report on how things are going. It's turned out to be that way anyway.
Okay, and saying that, then does that mean Aaron will have to attend to be able to take notes for that? I would, probably, I would think so, so we probably can get a ticket so that Aaron could attend and be taking notes from the speaker's mentions, is what I'm saying, but... Okay, anything else?
I think some of it's already been done, but is there any more with the reconciliation event?
Which?
It's coming up tomorrow?
Tomorrow is just, it's our regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay, she's actually going to be there too, so...
And if we are, if we do unveil the name, if it does get decided tomorrow, then we will be hosting something?
It's a good idea.
Okay, okay, good, thank you.